Well, it's seven o'clock. Can we get started?
Yep.
You got it set, Chris? There you go.
I'll set.
All right. It's called to order the City of Marine City Commission Meeting, Part Unknown. Regular meeting Thursday, April 2nd, 2020, 7:00 PM. Let's take a moment of silence for our dearly departed. And let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
The flag of the United States-
...of America- and to the republic-
...for which it stands.
...for which it stands. One nation, under God- One nation, under God- ...individually-
...liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabash.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Verkaman. City Manager Levin.
Here.
Uh, we'll give Cheryl a few more minutes before we excuse her. She may be having some technical issues. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? And remember in giving the motion, you may have to use your last name and then give the motion, please, so we know who it is.
Lisa Hendrick, so moved.
Support, Bill Clausen.
Any questions or concerns on the agenda? Hearing non, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman, not there yet. Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there anyone in the public to do public comment?
I'm joining right now, if you can hear me.
Yes, would you like to speak?
I'm just joining the meeting, so I don't know what we're speaking about, yet.
Oh, it's public comment. Anything you'd like to address the City Commission? Please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. This is your time to raise issues to the Commission. The Commission will not respond, but issues will be put up upon as necessary.
I'm okay with the thought. No public comments needed. Okay.
Hearing none, we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes of the City Commission regular meeting, March 5th, 2020.
Lisa Hendrick, so moved.
Callahan, support.
Jacob Bryson, support.
Any corrections or deletions or comments on the, uh, City Commission meeting? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman, not there yet? I guess I'm gonna rule her out right now. Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm sorry, Commissioner Bryson, we forgot about you.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Wendy Callahan, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through C as presented.
Paul Merchant, support.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to financial business. Disbursements, including payroll, for $516,492.56.
Wendy Callahan, I make a motion that we approve disbursements, including payroll, for $516,492.56.66.
Jacob Bryson, support.
Questions or concerns on the disbursement?
Yeah, I have a question on the disbursement for, uh, the building, building official. And I was looking at, at disbursements here. And, uh, everyone that he's got, January, uh, all four, and February, uh, for looking eight hours on a Saturday. Is that correct?
I understand.
What page are you on?
I am on-
Sixteen, say sixteen, eighteen. Fifteen of eighteen.
Fifteen of eighteen?
Sixteen of eighteen.
So, talking about those hours, he doesn't get overtime for Saturdays. It's just something that when he can make appointments with people, he, he will make appointments with them.
But it says eight hours. For, for every day. Does he work eight hour a day on Saturdays? They're all Saturdays.
I believe he's on the line right now.
I am.
Tracy. Yes.
That's obviously a typing era, era, or-
I- I think it's when, when it was entered into the system. That was just the date that was used to enter it into the system.
That's possible, because I work two four-hour days per week.
It probably coincides with the payroll date.
It says eight hours here, that's why I was asking. And then, and then all the dates are on a Saturday.
Like Elaine said, that's more than likely it was entered on that date. I mean, I had no control over that.
Okay, I just, I just was questioning the hours.
Yep. My, uh, my regular work time in Marine City is, um, Tuesday afternoon and Thursday morning.
Right, that's what I thought.
So what-
That's why, that, when I looked at the calendar and everything, was the, the Saturday.
So, to clarify that, what it is, is that's week ending on that date.
Thank you, Elaine, that's exactly what it is.
Okay.
It does say weekend ending on the invoice, does it not?
Yep, I believe so.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not at this time.
Anyone else? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the lawn maintenance contract. I, I just don't feel- I mean, we're so late in the season now, I, I can't see trying to get it up to, uh, a private contractor at this time, but I'd like to get the feeling of the board, uh, just for this year, moving on with Mike, but looking at an earlier date next year.
Um, can I speak, since I'm the one that slowed this down?
Yeah.
Okay, it's Lisa. Um, all right, so the reason why I did this is so I could have some time to look at some stuff. Of course, I couldn't get all the information due to our current crisis going on. But I think Dave's right, this year, it's too late. Next year, though, I think we should still reevaluate this, because what I did is I asked for all of the bids, even the one that we, that was pulled. Um, that bid came in at only $47,000. Um, I did talk to City of Elginak. Elginak has a lot, except for a cemetery. Um, they have a service that does it for $23,000 per year. Um, and that's from, um, April all the way through into October. I got that from a council member down there. I couldn't, East China, I got part of it. They hire some and, and don't hire some, so they're, it's kinda split. But I think there are companies out there that would be willing to give us a good price, but we're gonna have to start the process a lot earlier next year and try to get the word out, um, better next year.
I would have to agree, and we'd also probably start it more in December, January-
I agree.
-early January.
Yeah, agreed.
Do we know why the guy folded, uh, his bed?
I believe he may have heard from the other two.
Yep.
May I, may I speak on this for just a second?
Sure.
Yeah, this is Elaine. Um, I did have an opportunity to get a whole bunch of information on this, and in the future, I can provide it to, to the board, so that you have all this information for next year.
That would be great.
All right, let's have a motion to, uh, somebody would please make a motion to continue using the DPW services for lawn cutting for this calendar year.
This is Jacob Bryson, so moved.
Wendy Callahan, support.
Any other comments on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Mayor, yeah. Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to Friends of City Hall. Didn't we already address this in a prior, uh, meeting?
Uh, this, this is Elaine. Uh, in a prior meeting, they had come to us asking for a number of things to waive fees, and we wanted to have them come back to us with something specific, because they were asking for, we wouldn't, we weren't really clear what it was that they were asking for. So, at this point, they're just specifically asking for us to pay a share of the cost for the, um, the tap. And, uh, as part of their letter, they also asked about exterior upkeep of City Hall. I just wanna let you know that maintenance for the building is included. This is just general maintenance item, and we do have a capital improvement plan for that building, so the remainder of the request is already fulfilled.
So, they're asking us just to, for a portion of their water tap? And did they go that large water tap again? I don't have the paperwork in front of me.
I believe that they did.
$6,250, they're asking for us to do a third.
That's a six-inch main, then, so. Is anyone gonna make a motion? Sure, let's get a motion on, before we can get this started.
Okay.
Somebody like to make a motion on this?
So, Wendy Callahan, I make a motion, um, that we, uh, approve the request, um, from the Friends of City Hall, on the sharing of the cost of the tap fee of $6,250 with River Rock Teen Zone, um, Friends of City Hall and the Marine City Government.
Jacob Bryson, support.
All right, now discussion.
Well, this is Bill Clausen. I saw this in time in their, in their agreement when we signed our lease with them, that they were to take care of all this. And then I, and then the six, the six-inch main, is it dead-ended right now? I mean, it's, it's, it's then, there's a dead end, the six-inch main going in, and then another line along with it, to the building, for water, for just service. But I don't see anything on the outside of the building or anything, so fire connecting to the sprinkler system.
This is for the tap, and that's what they've had installed, so. Any other questions on that?
Um, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm- This is Lisa Hendrick.
Yep.
Here's my concern with us spending any money at this point, um, even on something as trivial as this. We don't know what's gonna happen in the future. We don't know what kinda problems we're gonna have with our budget, based on all the mess that we're in right now. And I'm seriously, since I was here, I know everybody says, uh, you shouldn't be on here a long time, but with my experience with the last, um, bad crash that we had, and what we had to do to survive, we don't know what we're gonna go into this time. And I think every dollar counts, and I think this is just unnecessary for us at this point. And I really think that we need to really be careful of anything that we spend at this point in the future, until we know what's gonna happen.
I agree with you, Lisa. So, any other questions or concerns on it?
No, I agree.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
This is Attorney Davis. Is there, is there any special circumstance presented for this request?
Not that I know of.
Thank you.
This is Wendy Callahan. I, I also, I agree with Lisa and Dave right now. I, I think we need to be very cautious, um, with what we're spending. I know it's not a lot, but, um, if there's any way that we can table this for a few months, um, I think we should, until we can, until we have a little better idea where we're going with this.
Is that a motion to table?
Yeah.
Support.
If that motion, okay, now that there's a motion to table, the only discussion is on whether or not to table.
Was there a second, though?
I second the table. Bill Clausen.
Motion second to table. Any questions or concerns on just the issue of tabling, not necessarily the tap itself?
I don't know if you even wanna try to table something like this. I think we oughta just get out of it, at this point. They have the money.
This is Paul Merchant. I agree, I agree. Uh, don't they have a grant, or weren't they just given a huge grant to, to sorta-
Yeah.
-help with these projects?
Yep.
But right now, we, we are talking about the table. So, any, any questions or concerns on the, on tabling?
Wait, can I, can I, oh, God. I can't retract that, can I?
No, we, we can vote on this table, we can vote the tabling, the tabling down-
Just vote, just vote the tabling down.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions on tabling? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Vanabash.
No.
Commissioner Bryson.
No.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
No.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Merchant.
No.
Motion fails.
All right, now, we're back to the actual discussion. Is there any further discussion on, on the actual proposal of Friends of City Hall? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
We need a motion for that, to approve-
We had that reported.
No, we didn't.
I thought we, we did before we-
Oh, yes, you're, you're right. Wendy did, yep, yep.
Yeah.
We did have one.
Attorney Davis, is that gonna be good? Because she superseded that with her motion to table.
Just redo the first- Please redo the first motion.
Wendy, can you go ahead and make the motion again?
The same motion?
The motion to approve your first one.
I make a motion to approve the request from the Friends of City Hall, um, on the cost sharing of the tap fee for $6,250 between the River Rock Teen Zone, Friends of City Hall, and the Government of Marine City, each covering one-third of the expense.
And we need support.
Paul Merchant, support.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on that? Hearing none, roll call vote, again, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
No.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
No.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Merchant.
No.
Mayor Vanabash.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, moving on to- As a rule, I was going to ask to not do any more of the meetings, just to get through what we could on the other business, but it seems that we are getting decent discussion and not tripping over each other. If everyone agrees, I'd like to move on to new business. If anyone has an issue, please let me know.
Uh, can, can, um, can I speak for a moment?
No, we cannot. I know who it is.
Okay.
We are actually on new business.
Okay.
Anyone have any issues about continuing on with the garden club and the rest of new business? All right, then, let's discuss the City Garden Club, Marine City Garden Club. Elaine, could you go over that, please?
Uh, yeah, Elaine here. Just to let you know, this is something that we've been doing in the past, a partnership in essence with them, and, uh, they, they put together the baskets and the barrels, and we take care of the watering. The approximate costs that would be incurred for the city for the watering is about $5,000.
Isn't this something, this is Lisa Hendrick, isn't this something we should be talking about at the budget?
Uh, this actually even starts before the budget does. So, a portion of it would be in this year's budget already.
Yeah, so, if, that should already be covered for this year, correct?
It, it is in this budget, yes, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we would spend it.
Correct. But I mean, it's already there, so I mean, there's really nothing for us to do. It's just one of those things we gotta wait and see again. And then the rest of it for next year gets covered in the next budget.
Well, I, I think you would need to make a decision whether you're going to water them or not.
Well, I, anyone like to make a motion to approve the watering? Hearing none, as-
Wendy Callahan, I make a motion to approve the watering of the flower, uh, flower ba- the hanging baskets and the flower barrels for this season.
Jacob Bryson, support.
Any further comments?
You're, you're talking about, you're talking about the budget, money for this year is all we're spending, right? Bill Clausen.
What you're approving is just water them for the entire season.
We can't stop watering in the first of July.
So, we would have to budget for the next year, the remaining costs?
Any further questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Merchant.
No.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion fails.
All right, moving on to- City Hall Material Subcommittee.
All right, manager, I'm here, uh, looking for two or three people from the board to serve on a subcommittee to help pick materials. Uh, this obviously isn't something that we're gonna be working forward with anytime soon. There's no reason that we couldn't still put the subcommittee together for future needs.
Lisa Hendrick, I'd like to be on it.
Bill, now, I'm on it as well there.
Okay, um, but you know, you're just picking, uh, materials, right, Bill?
Yeah.
We're not, all right. Um, anyone else like to be on it? All right. Uh, three volunteers, or the two volunteers, Lisa and Bill, uh, can we get a motion to form that committee?
I'll make a motion, Lisa's Lisa Hendrick, I'll make a motion that, um, myself and Bill be put on the City Hall Materials Subcommittee.
Support. Clausen.
Motion, support. Any questions on it?
This is not a permanent committee, it'll have a, uh, end date, end date, right?
Yes.
Hopefully, when the building's done.
Yeah, that's good.
Maybe, right? Any other questions on it? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to County of St. Clair Equalization and Assessing Contract. Um, Elaine, you wanna explain that a little to us?
Sure, no problem. So, this is the contract with the county for our assessing services. We've been contracting with them for a number of years. Uh, one of the big benefits of assessing with the county is that if we get in a position where our primary person would not be able to do the job, they have people that can easily step in and backfill. And they also have the higher level assessors that are required for certain jobs. Uh, the contract for, uh, the first year is no increase in price, and 1.5% each year thereafter. This is a five-year contract, and should we choose to terminate, there is 120 days- This is a five-year contract, and should we choose to terminate, there is 120-day written notice clause to terminate.
Can I get a motion to approve the contract?
Jacob Bryson, so moved.
Questions and concerns on the contract? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes, but did we have to give a price?
No, it's approving the contract, the price is in the contract.
All right. Yes.
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to city manager's report.
I think I'll just go over quickly some of the things that I've been doing. Um, so, there's been, out of the governor's executive orders, a lot of webinars to try and digest and figure out how to carry out all of the executive orders. So, I've been doing a lot of those webinars, including some from MSU Extension, Raymond James, Representative Paul Mitchell's webinar regarding the CARES Act. Uh, been working with department heads quite a bit, and also had several virtual meetings with them. That's a standing thing we will be doing from now on. Uh, the website is up and running, still experiencing some issues, uh, getting the migration through the internet to have it be able to properly find it on a search. However, if you type in www.cityofmarincity.org, it does come up. Um, also dealing with issues with the high water, that's something that's gonna continue to be a problem this year. Potentially, it looks even worse than last year. Um, regarding the measures that we've taken in our office for the, the COVID-19 coronavirus, uh, we've been dealing with this now since really March 10th, when the state originally declared a state of emergency and started issuing many executive orders from there on. Um, wasn't really a direct impact to the city until about March 16th, when, uh, the executive order that day closed files and, um, also started to roll into the next week when closing offices. Executive Order 2020-20 slash 21 is the one that, uh, is the real issue, where they issued the stay home and stay safe regulations for people to, um, only come in and work if they are essential services. And they've issued, they've issued a number of, uh, frequently asked questions on that to address some of the, the issues, if it is a social service or not. Um, we are all still working, uh, we are trying to work, is, trying to have people that work remote, work remote to the fullest extent possible. Um, just looking at my notes here, see if there's any other particular things. I think that's about it, summary right now. If you have questions, I'd be glad to address those.
Anyone have any questions for the city manager?
Lisa Hendrick, a quick question.
Paul Merchant. Go ahead, Lisa.
Um, was there some issue with the water plant yesterday?
So, there were, um, the granules in the clearing tank that they had to, uh, remove and replace, so they were working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Paul?
Uh, yeah, Elaine, do, I know, um, with, you know, personal income taxes, they've been kind of, um, set back a little bit. Are there any, any, uh, any word about property taxes being, um, kinda deferred for a while?
Have not heard anything about property taxes. One of the significant issues, though, with property taxes is that it is across the board, it's not just a city issue, a city issue, it's a county issue. Uh, there are millages, there are SADs. Uh, certainly, when, when and if anything comes through an executive order, we'll address it.
Okay, just wondering. Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions for the city manager?
I got one more. Um, Lisa Hendrick, um, the water bills, I know I've had a few calls from people, and I know the state has issued an edict on no shut offs or, um, that kinda thing. Uh, has any of that been addressed for our people, so there's a notice that they don't have to fret? I understand that the fees are being waived, um, but can you give us something on that?
You know, we actually did not shut off, uh, the last cycle. Uh, that was before the notice from the governor that we can't shut off. And we made sure that people that, for some reason, did not have their water because of non-payment were connected.
Well, this is Chris, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, we sent out four shut offs this week, and we included, um, a cover sheet with it, saying that, exactly what we just spoke about, that we expected them to call and make payment arrangements if they couldn't make the payments, and late fees were being waived and there'd be no shut off. So, every time we sent out a, send out a section until the time this is over, it will say the same thing.
Okay, that, I think that was the biggest concern somebody had, was if they can't afford to pay due to the fact that everybody's not getting their money, what happens in the next phase? And I think that's what they were concerned about.
Yep, they all went out to, in the shut offs this time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Go ahead.
I was wondering, uh, have you got any, uh, time that you think you may bring in the people back in the office? Uh, on the basis just a six-foot rule between them?
Uh, don't really have a timeframe anymore. I'm anticipating that the governor is going to extend the stay-at-home order probably through the end of April.
Uh, this is Mayor Vanabosh. I want, I would like to see the city offices manned for the, its normal business hours, so people can actually call and talk to someone. I don't know if I have support from the rest of the commission, but I think we, that's a vital resource for people to call to make sure we're still in business, we're still running a day full operation.
What are the current hours?
Nine to two.
Um, so, Elaine, this is Lisa, can you explain why we're only doing nine to two?
So, try, trying to keep separation from staff and making sure that we have backup if somebody does get sick, because we're already really bare-bones staff as much as possible. So, we're trying to work with what we have and, and try to serve the public with at least some time, which I guess is more than what a lot of other communities are doing.
That's not correct.
I've done a little bit of polling with some of the other communities, and Clay Township doesn't even answer the phone. I don't think anybody's even working there right now. Um, Algenack, Algenack does have, uh, the same office hours, so they are, they are answering the phone, so it's a bit of a mix.
Same with East China, they're running full hours, and-
Oh, my, I, oh, sorry.
They are, but they are using half staff to do it, so that they have less people.
I did speak with the manager there, and they may have to go to part-time hours or scaled-back hours.
Well, Godderville, I think they're managed with a lot of poor people.
Well, if, if people call in, how are they, I mean, can you get to the phone system from home? I mean, can you call them and-
I go in there for my nephew.
Good, this, this is Megan Pierce, this is the Treasurer and the Finance Director, and I also run the HR. Can I be allotted a few minutes to speak on this?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I, uh, prepared a, uh, note that I wanted to address on this topic, and I apologize, it's gonna take a few minutes, 'cause I wanna really, uh, explain to you what we've done in these last two weeks leading up to this. So, bear with me for a few minutes while I give you the overall view. On Thursday, May, March 12th, the commissioner packets were delivered containing a balanced budget that was the result of a collaborative effort amongst all the department heads and the city manager. This was the product of three weeks of diligent hard work and lengthy discussions. In the same exact day, we were instantaneously thrown into conversations of a growing concern on coronavirus. Our consensus on that day was to social distance and leave our doors open to the public. That evening, Governor Whitmer issued an executive order to shut down all K through 12 schools. With the severity of the situation quickly becoming apparent, we continued communication through the weekend. On Monday, March 16th, we had an emergency department head meeting. As a team, we outlined the concerns for daily operations and continued service to the residents. We made plans that addressed these concerns. None of us were certain of what was to come, but we were all in agreement that we wanted to be proactive in the event that a shut off, or, excuse me, shut down was looming. We ultimately closed our doors to the public on this day. This was not an easy decision, but it was the right decision. City Manager Levin wanted to protect the safety of her staff and residents, and was one of the very first countywide to implement this closed-door policy. Several other communities in St. Clair County followed this initiative in the coming hours and days. On Tuesday, March 17th, I reached out to our IT company, High Tech. We spent two days making sure we had the infrastructure in place, the VPN licensing, and the necessary devices to be able to remotely work from home if it was necessary. Pat from High Tech helped us tremendously to achieve this. Other communities are currently struggling because they didn't act quickly enough and now don't have the infrastructure or licensing requirements, and IT companies are stretched beyond capacity to be even able to set it up for them. We have full remote access to our desktop computers from home. I've also been in contact with Point and Pay to set up an IVR that is specially for the city of Marine City. This will allow our residents to call in a payment directly to the third-party automated system and/or through their live agent. This is at no additional cost to the city. On Monday, March 23rd, Governor Whitmer announced another executive order, putting the state in a lockdown status. This was her stay-home, stay-safe pledge. Specifically, I want to re-mention Executive Order 2020-21. This is a temporary requirement to suspend activities that are not necessary to sustain or protect life. Section 6, Paragraph A through D as in Delta, outlines all in-person government activities at whatever level, that includes county, state, or local. This strictly prohibits any type of government activity unless it is crucial, such as law enforcement, public safety, critical infrastructure, or managing payroll and employee benefits. We designated set hours that a resident could be assured that they would actually be able to speak to somebody by phone in person. This would not have been possible if our dedicated staff members would not have volunteered to come in and be available. They have also been opening water bills, processing invoices, and have been in regular contact by phone with multiple vendors. Now, I would ask you all to listen to this next part very carefully. This is now a major concern. The person that processes these payments and invoices can potentially be contaminated by coronavirus, by the content. I don't know if you guys are aware, but coronavirus is in Marine City. I spoke with the resident today, because she called in to inform us that she has been a positive diagnosis and wanted to send in a payment. Her concern was obviously not to get anyone sick in the office. This is vastly superior over what a majority of other communities have been providing. This does not mean that the employees are not working beyond the hours of nine to two. Quite the contrary, we are monitoring the COVID-19 executive orders that impact us directly, such as the water shut-off moratorium. There's been daily language regarding the stimulus package to review, payroll tax changes, unemployment information, et cetera. Nothing we are doing in that office is essential. What do I mean by that? What I mean is everything that's currently being done is because we care about the residents. But ultimately, nothing we are doing is saving people's lives. Some of us haven't been able to see our own children or elderly parents or grandparents for fear of making them ill. It's called stay home, stay safe for a reason. We have almost 11,000 cases in Michigan and 80 more deaths today. My safety means something to me. My coworker's safety means something to me. Your safety as my commissioners means something to me. If we can't be reached by phone immediately, I would ask that you please leave a message, and we will call you back as soon as possible. We have, all have access to our voicemails and emails. I've been returning, and everybody else is returning, calls and emails at all hours this week, sometimes as late as 9:00 PM. Nothing is more paramount than keeping people safe. I listen to the experts every day, and I take what they're saying wholeheartedly. Best-case scenario is that they're wrong. Hopefully, this is a distant memory sooner than later, but it's here, and we're doing the best we can, and we're not sacrificing people's lives unnecessarily. We're following the rules to slow the spread, keeping our physical distance, and of the highest importance, staying home and staying safe. Thank you for hearing my concerns on that, and I respectfully ask that you all adhere to the executive order issued from the governor.
And with that, is there a chance that we can keep our offices open for the 10-hour period that we're stating in our voicemail?
When you say the office is open specifically, what is it that you're looking for?
Yeah, I don't mean open, I meant someone answering phones, so it doesn't roll over Central Dispatch and they get bombarded. When we, you know, when a city resident can't get ahold of somebody at City Hall, they usually call Central Dispatch non-emergency number, which is listed on our face, on our webpage.
So, I would like to further add one note on that.
Okay, you're done.
I, I respect all her concerns.
Come on, let us, let us talk, let us go over this. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, you just wanna have somebody answering the phone?
I would love to have somebody on the ans, on the other end of the line, so it's not overwhelming our- So, right now, we've got six, five to six different county departments using Central Dispatch, which is not what it's designed for, for their call-ins now. It's the overflow for the health department, it's a call-in for the, and we even advertise, you know, it's a non-emergency call, Central Dispatch. So, I would like to have somebody that, just so, somebody, one of our residents calls and gets one of our people, that we're still in business, that we're still doing, um, the rules of the city.
Uh, this is Paul, and I, I, I work on, uh, the Baltimore also, and, uh, the mayor there is in there almost every day. I, I'm in there in the morning every day, or i- in the afternoon there. But, it, uh, we just, to keep our space and keep the door locked, nobody gets in, but they've got the girls in the office that are doing the work, answering the phone to answer the questions. Some of the humanity.
This isn't possible that-
So, what do we have?
It's fine, I'm asking for it to be staffed at the full time, but if it's not possible, it's not possible.
That would still be with one person, right?
No, I don't think we could end with one person, because you should have at least two in the office for safety reasons.
Okay, so we'd still be under three, and we would just try to expand the hours till 6:00 o'clock?
Correct. And, but if that's not possible, I can, I do understand the staffing issues, because some people can't come into work with different, you know, medical issues. They cannot be around people at this time.
Elaine here, Bob, is this something that we would be looking for a motion for?
Well, I, I, I think you have to, you know, the, the mayor, from what I understand, we wanna be able to have, to provide some level of comfort to the citizens, that when they call the local government, the government is there at its normal hours and answers the phone and addresses whatever questions they might be as tri- the phone and addresses whatever questions they might be, as trivial as they might be or as important as they might be. So, the question is, is can we safely, under the rules, have somebody there that answers the phone for the entire workday, Monday through Thursday? We also have the need for somebody to be there to perform some of the functions that we're outlining, correct? Some of the payables, some of the accounting issues, some of the payroll issues and whatnot. So, the question is, is do we believe under the rules that having two people there, maybe one of the persons only needs to be there half a day, with the doors locked and the public not available to enter, is that still within the guidelines of the governor and still practicing, you know, safe distancing and, and still performing an essential function? So, that's the question.
So, Bob, I actually do the payroll and I did it all from home this weekend, just so you know.
Excellent.
So, this is Elaine here. One, one of the questions that I have for you, Bob, about the, the executive order is that, kind of particular and it even narrows things down to the point where if you have someone that's just coming in to do payroll and the bare minimum, that's all that they should be doing. And that's really what we're doing now. So, you're talking about expanding the hours?
It's just, it's just, it sounds like the mayor, it sounds like the mayor just wants the expanded hours so that citizens who call at 3 o'clock get the same comfort level as somebody who calls at 1 o'clock.
Correct.
And we, we could achieve that same goal probably in a number of different ways without even having the staffing in the office.
Then it would show that we're still in, that we're there, you know, still helping out, trying to do the most we can.
Well, if one person in the office that's answering the phone and they're busy with somebody else, yeah, I would think that you should have at least two in there.
Yeah, we, we often get in situations where everybody is busy and it goes to a voicemail.
I understand that and, yeah, I've, I know that happens, but.
Yeah, I, I think that we can work on.
Maybe I'm asking too, maybe I'm asking too much.
I think we can. Hey, Dave, it's Elaine. I, I think that we can try and find some way to make that work.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Davis here.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't think that, I don't, I don't think you should run to the conclusion that you're asking too much because there is, there is a certain element of, of support when those who might be panicking more than, than need be or panicking beyond, you know, beyond maybe even normal levels, that when they call their local government, somebody's there, it provides a sense of stability to the citizens, a, a, you know, maybe, maybe a false, a false sense of stability, but nevertheless, it is good that when you call a governmental agency, that you can still talk to the human and get an answer. So, I understand the concern.
And, and if we can work on that, that's just my, my.
Could we have call forwarding? Could we have, could we rotate on call forwarding?
We're working on that. We have, that's the only thing we haven't gotten fixed 100% technology wise.
Okay, I mean, that would, that, that would do the trick probably.
Somebody they can speak to that knows their, you know, that knows the city, not even 100%, but at least can, they can communicate with since they're locked in their homes right now and give them a sense of security that we're still out there for. Even if it isn't 100%, not a false sense of security, but at least it's something to help someone else.
Dave, this is Elaine. We'll, we'll definitely try and find some way to get that done.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any more questions for the city manager?
Lisa Hendrick, just a real quick thing too. I, I know you're dealing with people paying their bills, but I would also ask them if they can pay it through their bank and have that send it, if that's possible. I know not everybody has bank accounts, but if they pay it through their bank, then there's nothing that gets sent to you from them, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, Lisa, that actually is one of the options for people to pay their bills is that they can pay by electronic check through their bank.
Correct, and I, but I think sometimes some people don't know it or some people just don't have bank accounts, so.
We, we can push a notice out on Facebook and remind people.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Hendrick, I just want to add one thing on that. It's actually a, a bank's discretion, their own, if they want to offer that service for their, their clients. So, some bank, a majority thinks, yes, they do do it, but some do not. But they all have the ability to go online. Just, just putting that out there.
Most of them do though, yeah.
Yes, yes, most of them do, but it is their choice.
All right, any other questions for the city manager?
I would just like to add one. Could I, could I just add one last thing? I look forward to the day when we can be back in a meeting together again. I miss y'all.
Mm-hmm.
This is Bill.
Go ahead.
If, if this is going to be an ongoing thing with the commissioners and stuff, I know the staff are getting a stipend for their phone and I know that the commissioners don't, how are we going to work this?
We'll discuss this if this has to go on much further, Bill. I'm hoping it doesn't. We come up with a different system for this, but hopefully this isn't an extremely long period.
Any other questions for the city manager? Hearing non, Commissioner Privilege, Mr. Merchant, would you like to get us started?
At this time, I'm, I'm all set. I'm going to pass the gauntlet.
Mr. Clausen.
Yep, I'm concerned about 19 and it's like, I still have to go out, be in my position and be out in the public, but when I do go out, we were asking that there's nobody in the house, nobody there when we do our inspections. But you just have to think smart, wash your hands several times and just watch what you're doing. Have a good night.
Wendy, would you like to go next?
Um, yes, just want to, you know, ask our, tell our citizens to please be safe and stay healthy and just follow the social distancing guidelines that have been put out there and guidelines to the executive order, please. I mean, make sure that anything you're doing, I mean, it might be what you might think is essential, but is it, is it really essential? So, you know, the sooner we, the sooner we start biding by all of this, the sooner this goes away. So, please be safe, be careful and stay healthy.
Lisa.
Sorry, I had my phone on mute. I was on mute. Same thing as Wendy, you know, everybody should just stay safe, follow the rules, let's get this over with so that we can go on and I just want to, I appreciate all of our employees to hang in there, our fire department, our police department, DPW, I know the DPW may have to deal with some problems sewer wise, but let's hope not and let's hope this gets out of here fast so that we can all get back to a normal life. Thanks.
Jacob, would you like to go next? Commissioner Bryson.
Uh, nothing for me.
Okay, and I'd just like to close with today's, today's stats from St. Clair County. We just received them from the health department. We do have 53 confirmed cases of COVID-19. One, we do have one confirmed case in the city limits so far, but that number will, is due to change. We have to be vigilant as stated earlier. We are testing more people now because the tests are more readily available, but some of the private testing labs are not reporting back to CDC the same way. So, we have to be very careful with some of the new stats and I'm hoping that everyone will head by to it. It's been, on the fire side of it, it's been, we've been much slower, which is a good thing, but we are making, taking certain cautions. We are not going inside the homes at first. If it's truly a need that you need us in there, we will, we are going to gown up and head in, but at first, we are going to try and talk to you through the door. So, if some people get a little bit disconcerted that we aren't coming in, it's not that we're worried about you or we're worried about ourselves also, that we aren't threatening it to you. So, we are trying to keep our distance from you. But if it's a full arrest or difficulty breathing, we will be coming inside just like normal, but we will have a gown and a mask. So, we are limiting the number of masks. We did receive some from Clay Township this week, so we are good for at least a period of call. So, with that, everyone be safe.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just, just for everyone, this is my eighth virtual meeting and I would have to commend you as, as being the best so far. This was a good meeting, well done to all of you.
Much better than I thought. I, the rest of the commission did wonderfully. I, I didn't think this would go this well, so I've been proven wrong, so I'm good with that.
Mr. Mayor, why don't you, why don't you call, Mr. Mayor, call me tomorrow because I, I think I need to cheer you up.
I just have some businesses that really want to get back to work today, gentlemen. These men and women, it's been a long winter. So, with that, can I get, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Lisa Hendrick, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Before, Bill Clausen.
All in favor? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, and everyone have a great night.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.